Okay, I would, we'll now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education meeting for November 7th, 2016. May I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Lane is absent. Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Mr. Marcusson?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our high school goals and the strategic plan. Our vision is very clear, anyone that's read it. Lake Forest High School is to be a leader in developing students to make a difference in their world. Boards and staff that came before us thought very carefully about the key words in that vision. Leader, not just acceptable, not just top half, a leader. Student-focused, making a difference, not just getting by, but actually making a difference in their world. Our milestones are very clear and aspirational also. I came up with an acronym, A.I.A.P.E.T., almost like Chia Pet. We'll allow you to remember them. Six milestones. Achievement, instruction, assessment, partnership, environment, and talent. I want to focus on the first two. Achievement and instruction. The achievement milestone states that Lake Forest High School will be nationally recognized for achieving significant intellectual, social, and emotional growth for every student. Again, the words were very carefully chosen. Nationally recognized, not better than Stevenson or Northside Prep. Significant growth, not moderate or ongoing. And the key phrase in a lot of our milestones, every student. Not the kids who take AP classes or the kids who don't. Every student. Our instructional milestone states that instruction will be highly differentiated, inquiry-based, and driven by students. Again, highly differentiated means every student, not one-size-fits-all. Inquiry-based means using questions and problems, not facts and lectures, to help students learn on their own. You're going to hear and have heard about equity and access, a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and access to the good stuff for every student. What's the board's role in all of this? The honest answer is, we're still trying to figure that out. Do we have the right policies in place to achieve our vision and reach these aspirational milestones? Are we making the right investments? Are we measuring and reporting? And most importantly, are we moving fast enough to fix the inequities? Too large a percentage of our kids aren't college or career-ready. We have to get better. Everyone has a reason why they join the school board. Mine was to be sure we're doing everything we can to promote real social and emotional wellness. Our kids, like kids in a lot of communities like our, struggle with anxiety and depression. Again, are we making enough of and the right investment? And do we have the right policies in place? And are we doing enough to improve? Student growth. We should begin to measure and report and act now, not a year from now. What are we measuring? And do we have the right policies? And how are we getting better? Show us with examples and data. Everyone with kids looks at certain issues through the lens of their own kids. I have a sample of two. Our Northwestern grad struggled with the academic and social transition to the high school. I've heard from other parents whose children had similar issues and talked with staff about this transition challenge. We're doing a lot, but again, are we making the right investment at the middle schools and at the high school? Do we have the right policies? And are we making the right investment to get better at this? And how will we know? Again, with examples and data. Per the most recent student school report card, Lake Forest High School spends 46% of expenditures on instruction. That's below the state average for high schools. There's a lot of inconsistency in how schools report, which is part of the challenge in comparing, but we should be better. Our shared admin and support services expenditures were flat for FY '17 versus last year, which shows fiscal responsibility. But again, are we making the right investments in our priorities? I give myself a D minus for board communication, within the board, with staff, and in the community. We, I, personally, spend more time worrying about how to say something and not communicate because of OMA rules than actually communicating. I don't know how yet, but we, I, will improve. Always when you're not sure what's important, and this is something I'm going to continue to tell myself, or where we should spend our time or our resources, always go back to the key words in our aspirational vision. Leader in developing students to make a difference. More to come. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Marcusson. I'd like to begin with our principals' update, and I do not have the pleasure of being the principal. Dr. Holland is away and at a meeting across town at City Hall right now, with meeting with the city council and a group of our students. So I will read to you Dr. Holland's remarks for her principals' update. She says, "I am currently providing remarks at the City of Lake Forest City Council meeting honoring our art club and the creation of the Gorton Viaduct Train Safety mural. The mural was created by over 30 students in our art club who began this work last November, under the leadership and support of one of our awesome faculty members, Carolyn Bielski. The mural was created in collaboration with the Lake Forest High School Art Club, Caroya, the City of Lake Forest, and Metra. Our art club also recently finished a mural for Little Scouts and is currently developing the design for a mural in our new coffee bar. Congratulations to our students on all their accomplishments and to their commitment to both beautifying and educating the school community through their art." The PSAT. On October 19th, we administered the PSAT to our juniors and approximately 170 sophomores. Along with the state, we adopted the SAT, and we have moved forward with the implementation of the SAT suite, which entails assessment across all grade levels. This will support us in monitoring academic progress and will provide us with aligned longitudinal assessment data for our students, and the assessments will be administered in the spring. Although we have implemented the SAT, we continue to offer the ACT to Lake Forest High School students. We are hosting two Saturday ACT testing days, December 10th and February 11th. We recognize that most of our students will choose to continue to take the ACT, and we want to continue to make it accessible and offered within the school. With shifting discourse in higher education regarding the role of these types of assessments in the college admissions process, by offering both assessments, we believe our students will be prepared for whatever post-secondary opportunities they choose to engage. Parent-teacher conferences. We'd like to thank everyone who came out to parent-teacher conferences. We also want to thank our faculty for taking the time to meet with our families regarding student progress and achievement. We hope you found the time valuable. In the case that you were not able to attend conferences, please email your child's teacher to schedule a call, a time to meet, or you can engage with faculty via email. Also, thank you to the APT for providing dinner for our faculty that evening. November is Lake Forest High School Foundation Month. There are not many things in the high school that have been done without the help and support of the Lake Forest High School Foundation. Our foundation has an unwavering commitment to furthering the tradition of excellence within the high school through innovative teaching and learning programming activities and events. This year in particular, the foundation has supported the creation of our New World Language and Social Studies Learning Labs. Thanks again. It is our expectation that our students will continue to see and experience the direct benefits from the foundation's ongoing support. New scheduled parent and community feedback meetings. We hosted two parent-community feedback meetings in October. We have already shared the feedback with the Schedule Committee and have also started to work to address some of the more specific questions and concerns that were shared. We will continue to host meetings throughout the year to continue to improve the experience. Additionally, the committee has solicited feedback from our faculty, has scheduled a meeting with our support staff, and committee members are working on a short survey to send out to all students within the next week. We are also offering optional meetings for students to engage in small-group conversations about the changes as well. The Choices Fair. This past month, the high school hosted the Choices Post-Secondary Planning Fair for students with special needs. The event took place on October 17th. We offered presentations, along with a post-secondary transition fair, which included 62 college and transition representatives. The Choices Fair has been in existence for the past 20 years and is run by a consortium of 12 suburban high schools. We had over 1,000 attendees for this event and a lot of positive feedback. It was well-attended by students, parents, and educators. A special thank you to our faculty members, Sandy Haran and Liz Hannan, who provided a true labor of love and leadership for hosting such a huge and very important event. Thanksgiving break. In a few weeks, we will close school for the Thanksgiving holiday. We have school on Monday and Tuesday. School is closed on Wednesday through Friday. As usual, Monday and Tuesday will be scout days. And that concludes the principals' report. I'd like to continue with the superintendent's report at the podium.
Mike, do we not get Boran Abatisa or Athletson tonight? No student reports?
Particularly when one of them is a state champion.
Yeah. They are not in attendance with us tonight, so we'll have to catch them next month. I'll show you, this is the time of year in which superintendents spend a lot of time in professional development with each other, thinking about what we want to look at trying to accomplish in the coming, in next year, so in the '17, '18 school year. And I want to show you a couple of things from some of the learning that I've been Well, that wasn't supposed to come up there. Who would want to skip that? All right. So this, some of these conferences have to do with trying to get people to take risks, just like we're trying to get our students to take risks with things. And this is a video that illustrates some of that.
I'll do it. Here goes something, I guess.
Now, this is a student about to take maybe the first jump ever down the big hill.
You can do this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump.
You got it.
Whoa, my ski's slipping off.
Just remember, never snowplow, okay?
No snowflows.
Just keep it straight, and you'll be fine.
Okay.
Do the same thing you do on the 20s.
Straight. Do you go faster on the in-run?
Little bit.
A little bit?
Yeah.
Is it any steeper, do you think? Not much?
Same, same steepness, it's just longer.
Well, just longer. Just longer, just a bigger 20, that's all.
Yep.
It's a bigger 20.
Go ahead. You got this.
I got it.
It's fine. No, you'll be fine.
Okay. Here.
The longer you wait, you'll be more scared.
Now, what, in the part of the conversation here is, the longer you wait, the worse it gets, okay? And so, you're about to see what happens.
Go. Yeah!
Easy, huh?
Just the suspense at the top at the first time freaks you out. That's the only thing, it's so fun!
One of 60?
Huh? 60 seems like nothing now. Woah!
So, one of the, one of the things that the presenter was trying to get us to do was to get over it and start using Twitter in effective ways.
7:38.
And you can follow me at MSimic now. So, it is official, I am out there. So, another one of the things that was really interesting, instructionally, and see if we get an awesome ad here. In case you didn't catch that, so you pull out your calculator or your phone, you take a picture, tells you the answer. You want to see the steps? Kids, you catching all this? I already have it. It comes from the audience, all right? So, you remember the days when we thought that having a calculator was cheating? And now, when you go in to take the ACT, bring your calculator with you. There was a lot of discussion not very many years ago about whether having a calculator was going to be this horrible thing for the brain. One of the presenters said, "Look, the Greeks hated literacy because they thought people wouldn't have to remember or memorize anything anymore." And this is not that dissimilar. So what this, what this represents is, one, among many, many, many things, that is, that changes how kids are going to learn material, and then what is expected of them in school. Because if you can get the answer like this, what's school all about? School needs to be something about, something other than just getting the answer. And to that, I want to show you. This is Bloom's Taxonomy. This is from Mrs. Kryling's alma mater. This is from Vanderbilt University. Thank you very much. And this is Bloom's Taxonomy. This is a researcher from the University of Chicago that created a fundamental piece of, of learning for the education community. And if you look at that and think about where you spent all of your time when you were in school, the overwhelming majority of time spent in K-12, when we were all in school, was usually at remember. And not a whole lot of understand even, but typically remember. That means, I show you, you memorize, I give you a test, you show me that you can remember, an exercise in short-term memory. What is new to the chart is the top of it, which is create, which is something that was not in Bloom's original taxonomy. It was evaluate and analyze and synthesize were the top three. And with the advent of the internet and the access to all this information, it's a new part of the taxonomy, which is to go beyond all those other things. And so, good instruction requires that you do all these other things below that, and then you create something that is meaningful. And I want to show you an example of what that looks like. So you can get this on your phone, you can get this on your iPad or other things. It's Google Earth, and you can do all sorts of cool stuff with it.
Welcome to this Google Lit Trip from Mary Shelley's Frankenstein, created by Gregory Greenleaf and the students of his 2012-2013 Advanced Placement English Course at Greeley High School in Cumberland, Maine.
So this is a project that was created by the students of the course. And it happened to be an AP course. One of the things that schools are prone to overlooking is that the AP kids get the cool, creative stuff. And then, as you go down to students that are not taking AP, you get into packets and worksheets. And everybody, the fact of the matter is that everybody needs the cool stuff, not just the AP students. So this is something that the students created.
According to Mr. Greenleaf, Frankenstein is a great novel, but it is difficult novel in many ways. The first challenge is helping students unlearn what they know about the story. I do this by simply asking my students to identify the Frankenstein in Frankenstein. Most students will answer that the name refers to the monster, the tall guy with green paint and bolts on the side of his head. Actually, the name refers to Victor Frankenstein, the creator of the monster, or creature, as he is often called. I then ask students to tell me what they know of the search for the Northwest Passage. Again, this is a topic that few students know about. Neither did I, in fact, when I first read the novel.
So there's all sorts of different parts of this. There is geography, there is history, there is exploration, there's an ability for kids to have an open-ended exercise here. Show me what you can do to demonstrate your learning. Find a cool way to show the stuff that we are working on in class. Another example that was really a particularly good one was, instead of the teacher going out and trying to find a good two-minute video on mitosis in a science class, the assignment was, go find a good two-minute video on mitosis and come back. And by the way, tell me why it's a good video. Tell me which ones you didn't take. So it turns that around, and then by the time the students are done with it, they create their own two-minute video that's better than any of the ones that they saw on mitosis, of course. They can combine factors from other ones, they can create their, their own stuff. So this goes on for some time. There are all sorts of things like this for every kind of literary, novel, and whatnot all the way through the English curriculum, whether it's The Odyssey, whether it's Frankenstein, which is one of the books that our students read typically in the 12th grade, and everything in between. Many of them are created by teachers, but a number of them are also done by students accessing all the information that they have at their fingertips. So that is some of the learning that I've been doing, things that I hadn't seen before and things that I haven't tried. And I will be coming to a classroom near you, students, and trying to take videos of some cool stuff and then tweeting it out. Thank you.
Is that it, Mike? You got more? Okay. Now's the time for public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Nope? Okay, we have...
Oh, there is one more thing from the superintendent's report. I am sorry. November 15th has been named School Board Members Day in Illinois. And tonight, I would like to thank, take a moment to thank our school board members for their commitment and dedication to our students, staff, and community. One of the things that is easily overlooked, and this is a community, these are communities where people are really incredible about giving of their time, and this is one of the public services that were, the pay is terrible, and sometimes the hours are long and thankless, but each of the people up here is dedicated to striving to do what is right for their community, and they take the job extremely seriously. A former board president said, "The school board is the purest form of democracy," and that is particularly true in Knollwood, Lake Forest, and Lake Bluff, where 95% of the revenue is generated locally, and then that revenue is spent with the approval of these seven folks. So this is a very, very beautiful form of democracy. We have a number of students with us here today, and kids, this is an awesome civics lesson for you, because this is the money that come from your parents' households, and these seven people are entrusted with spending that in a wise and prudent way. And it is spent locally, raised locally, and decided, and then spent locally. And it's also decided in public meetings, just like this. Our board members give up their personal and family time and share their talents to ensure our students are provided an exemplary education, one that not only prepares our students for college or careers, but also, as Mr. Marcusson mentioned, to be leaders in the 21st century in their world. And each of our students' worlds will be different. That world is described very carefully and consciously in the mission statement, that it is their world that they change, whatever that world might be. So I'd like to say thank you to each and every one of our board members on behalf of our administration, our staff, and our students. Thank you for your commitment to public service.
So we have two reports. The first one is on the strategic plan.
The strategic plan presentation has two parts. They will both be brief. They would be better if Dr. Holland were here, I can tell you that. Strategic plan is for, the board members have seen this a number of times and may or may not have questions on it, but the board challenges the administration and the staff with a mission and a vision and a set of milestones, which is, if you achieve these things, and Mr. Marcusson quoted from those extensively earlier, to see significant intellectual, social, and emotional growth in every student. And then the administration creates a strategic plan on an annual basis. There's a one-year plan, we also have longer plans, but I want to show you some of the things from this year's plan. There's some highlights from that. So three key challenges for the coming year. First, Mr. Marcusson mentioned earlier, the guaranteed and viable curriculum, which are including curriculum maps and articulation maps. And a guaranteed viable curriculum is an industry term, and what it means is, what do you want kids to know and be able to do? And does everybody get that? And making sure that they get what we deem to be the good stuff. That if you are in one class and your friend is in a, in another class, but it's the same class, are they both getting the same high-quality material? Is it guaranteed? Do they for sure get it? And is it viable? Is it the right stuff? That's what this is. This is like the least exciting sexy thing in the world, but it is really important because this is what says that the kids, what do we want kids to know and be able to do by the time they leave our classroom? It's a very big deal, and it is way harder than any of us would have ever imagined to capture that. Second big thing. Last year, I would have told you that two things that we could not mess up on. One was to create, to gain agreement on a new school day, and the other one was to launch the one-to-one initiative for grades 10, 11, and 12. Well, we did both of those things, so what is it for this year? This year was to launch the new school day. So last year, we planned it, this year, we executed it. And also, food service, the food service program. This doesn't sound like it'd be all that big a deal, but staff and students alike thought that the food was about the only thing worth talking about for the first three weeks of school. The food service was a very big deal, because we shortened the lunch period and other things. The new school day has, it's not gone off without a hitch. There are certainly things that we're learning along the way, but it's, obviously, students are in classes, they're learning, and we have also seen the food service program be launched effectively. All of these things are not without some tweaks. The biggest challenge, save this one for the end, is defining social and emotional well-being. So this is one of the challenges laid out in the milestones. So what do we think social and emotional well-being looks like in our school district, in our high school? It's not an easy thing to define. It's an even harder thing to define if you want to try to measure that in some way. So this is the big challenge. We've waited several years to even try to tackle that, and that is, that is a really tough one. And Cornelius is going to bail me out here. Part two, I'm going to try. So we hope by the end of the year, we will have a definition for what social and emotional well-being looks like at our high school. Hey, you look good, Cornelius. Anything for a little limelight.
Just get out of there.
This is like the last guy that wants to be on camera, too, by the way. There we go. All right. So the vision mentioned earlier, the mission mentioned earlier, the milestones mentioned earlier, these are all things that are on our website. There's a detailed handout that the board has that will also be on, on our website. Number of the things they just mentioned, guaranteed and viable curriculum is up there. Our students will be college and career-ready, is a new definition. It's going to be a national definition for college and career readiness, we're applying that. Another very cool thing is to encourage kids to participate in at least two extra... Another very cool thing is to encourage kids to participate in at least two extra-curricular, co-curricular activities, clubs and sports. And then they will actively engage in applying their executive functioning skills. So there are a lot of things that we are taking on this year, and this is a list of just some of those. I don't want to go on and on. I want to touch on a couple of them. The data dashboard includes readiness information. This is one that is of interest. We are partnering with ECR, it's a company that the board will hear more about in the future and also in this meeting as well, I am sure, creating a dashboard for each of our students and also having that available on our website, where the critical data points for our district and for our students. The number... One of the things that Dr. Holland talks about at length is the supports and interventions. It's the last part of this. If I were to pick one word that I think of when I think of Dr. Holland, it would be support. She is an expert in creating systems of support for kids and also interventions, that we have these things in place for our students. You hear us talk about tiered intervention, that tier one, tier two, tier three, and some kids need various levels of interventions in our schools and to have each of those in place. So these are some of the things that we'll be working on. Be happy to field any questions from the board.
Mike, I have a question about the dashboard. There's a lot of information that we've talked about potentially being on that. Have we also... Have you guys also thought through privacy? Will colleges be able to access that? Will students be able to access that? Like how does... It's a lot of information on it, on our kids, which is wonderful in one aspect, but on the other, could be a little challenging.
No, that is a great question. We would have... For the district's dashboard, we'd not have any individual student data on that. It would be aggregated. For parents and students, there's a level of access that they can have to that, and then staff would be a different level yet again. So there'd be gradations of access for that. That's one of the things that ECR and all their work, and that's one of the advantages of working with a company like that, they do these things with many districts, and so the privacy issues are things that they're fluent in. So anybody outside the district would have only aggregated data to look at. Thanks for the question.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
And we will be back in future meetings to provide updates on how these major things are progressing. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing Alan and I, Dr. Wallard and I, the opportunity to share with you the assessment report. The main purpose of the assessment report today is to look back at last year's school year and the most widespread assessments completed by our students. But I do want to take a moment here and I want to introduce Dr. Alan Wallard. He's new to the school leadership team. The Cubs picked up a couple of free agents in the offseason to allow them to achieve their goals. I always like to think of Dr. Wallard as our Ben Zobrist. He has been just stepped up in so many different ways to help out in many different conversations. And also, we've had a lot of laughs together as we worked together and partnered together with not only this, but also freshman placement and a couple of other topics that we've enjoyed again, so we can progress toward the strategic plan. And so I'd like to begin with a few slides about our, again, the assessment report. The two main, again, ACT is for last year was completed by our class of 16, and the juniors last year took in April the last widespread ACT during the school day. The ISBE has moved away from the ACT. We will continue to offer it, as Mr. Simic had mentioned, on Saturdays at the high school, but not during the school day. The whole assessment environment is changing pretty rapidly, and so we have to keep pace with that. We're very excited. So not only are we going to look back, we're going to take a very brief look forward because we're excited about the implementation of the suite of SAT suites as they work to measure student growth. And then we'll also have a few slides regarding the advanced placement program. And again, we'll take a look at a brief forward and then answer some questions at the end of the brief presentation here. So this is a slide that we have been using for a number of years. It's a nice longitudinal slide to show the growth of our students on the ACT. The top line represents students who sat for the ACT using standard time, okay? And that also represents the last score. So not always, but generally it's their highest score. And so that, again, is a... The largest population of students, but that does not include all students. The blue line, I really like to see what the improvements we've made there because that blue line, which began in 2013, is measuring all of our students. And we've got a nice steady increase, I think, well, from last year to this year, and that's something that I think to be very proud of. And then also, if you look at the very bottom, those are the students that did use extended time or had the opportunity to use extended time. And then going from 2015 to 2016, there was a significant jump in that particular score. Again, I would like to see, to think that it's related to some of the work that we're doing. I don't have a full-blown-out research on causation of that, but again, there's some good things that are happening at the high school. Again, the ACT will continue to get scores for ACT students, but it won't be necessarily, it doesn't have to be for all of the junior class. And so as we see our numbers related to next year, we'll see how we... If we incorporate the ACT score in the report for next year, okay? And that's a changing... One of the changes in the assessment environment. I would like at this time mention that the PARC test will no longer be administered at the high school. It will continue to be administered third grade through eighth grade in our community, but not at the high school. And then I'm going to hand over and Dr. Wallard will talk about the AP exams.
Thanks. Again, appreciate the warm welcome and just a great opportunity to meet the board for the first time, so thank you. So I'm going to just speak...
Really, Ben Zobrist, though? That's...
I know, that was odd. I didn't know where that was coming.
Yeah.
I'm lacking the beard. I can't pull that off.
MVP. No pressure.
There you go, no pressure. So just to talk real briefly about AP, I think it's a pretty powerful conversation to have and being new to the district and stepping in and seeing the tremendous growth that you see, it's really something that this district should be very, very proud of. The trajectory is one that I would say, based on me being new, I would fully expect, given your students at District 115, I'm not surprised by that upward trajectory, and I think you should be proud of it. I will make an argument for the case that President Marcusson and Superintendent Simic, you talked about kind of all means all. You talked about the AP kids getting to do the cool stuff. One of the things that I would make an argument that I see, I wouldn't be surprised if that number continues to go up in the next couple of years, not because the kids who have traditionally taken AP classes take more AP classes, but because some of the kids who, maybe it'll be a struggle for them, but they'll learn resiliency, and maybe they get a two, or maybe they get a three, or maybe they get a four or five. They persevere, and that experience ends up being beneficial for them to succeed at the higher education level. So I think there's a lot to be proud of there, and I think that there's, you know, probably more room for growth. I don't think AP is the end-all, be-all. I don't think you define a kid by a standardized test or AP, but it is a snapshot, and it's something that a kid can really learn internally a great deal from. This is another thing too, that Tom and I felt was really important to be a part of our narrative tonight when we decided what to talk about. All districts, not just this district, I can tell you, every district gets nervous as more and more kids access AP, whether or not they can be successful. And if you take a look, we just looked at the previous slide, right? We saw that upward trajectory. If you take a look in the core areas, math, science, English and social studies, they've continued to add more and more exams, but the pass rates tend to continue to be really, really impressive. That's a very important thing for our community to know and to understand, that more kids are taking it, and some might not struggle, and some might struggle, but a lot of them are being really successful. To have an idea that a three is not okay, but a five is the only thing that's acceptable, that doesn't really make sense depending on the kid. A three might be outstanding. So I think of my own children and what they might try to access when they get to high school. Some of them might try an AP class and they get a three. I'll be, as a father, very proud of that. So I think that's an important thing for us... Ooh, geez, sorry. For us as, you know, members in the community and as even parents to think about.
Again, just some quick highlights to really... The improvement in the ACT from last year, again, of all students, I mean, that's such a significant... That we want to address all of the... AP numbers continue to increase as you saw the actual number of tests increase. We are up again for this year of students enrolled, or the actual total enrollments in AP continues to grow. The honors program also continues to grow. But I want to stop there. It's not all about AP and honors classes. Those are quick to represent, but we are seeing a widespread students reaching their next level of challenge, whether it's students, again, in classes that Mike had mentioned that sometimes they end up with the curriculum instruction is, or Mr. Simic mentioned, related to worksheets. We want to get more kids into the good stuff, and we are seeing systemically moves up, movement up throughout all curriculum levels. And then again, Alan has a few comments about the student growth.
So Mike brought up five, 10 minutes ago, just about the fact that Dr. Holland really focuses on supports. And this bottom part is really something that I'm also passionate about. To be a school that says what supports we offer is really not telling you much about a school. It shouldn't be what supports a school offers. It should be about a school and the supports that kids access. That's what matters. You can offer all the supports in the world, but if you're not creating a system where kids access it, it's really kind of a moot point. And so what we're really trying to do with our resource centers this year is we're first of all trying to make them completely and readily available to all kids at all times of the day. The biggest difference you can make is from when school starts until when school ends. It doesn't mean that before school and after school aren't helpful. Certainly, our PLT time on Thursday mornings, we're seeing good attendance by students at that point in time, but during the school day, what type of interventions and supports to provide your students. And so we're actually continuing to make sure that kids are accessing the various resource centers that we have by department throughout the school day and tracking that and really taking a look at what departments are kids really trying to get extra support on. And that should be something that teachers should be encouraging. It shouldn't just only be initiated by kids, but we certainly are proud of them when they are being proactive. So just in closing, in terms of the brief look forward, we talked a little bit about the suite of assessments. If you recall, a couple of minutes ago, Tom was showing the ACT scores, and he was showing the uptick. The thing about looking at data that way is you're looking at different groups of kids. So that doesn't always tell you the whole story. You're looking at a 26.3 or a 27.1, or a 27.1... Excuse me, 27.4. That's great to see that growth, but with the suite of SAT assessments, the one thing really we want to be able to do is give kids, give their parents, the information on that student's growth during their time at Lake Forest High School. And that's another thing that the suite will allow us to do. When we brought up earlier about knowing the impact that we as a school have, when you're looking at individual growth data on a student, that will really reveal a lot more to you than just an average score of heterogeneous groups of kids. And so with the suite, we're really, really excited about that.
I just want to hit the... I think we've said enough about the AP enrollment, but the continuing... We have a new process that we're communicating with the middle schools regarding the freshman placements. Again, we're looking forward to having the class of 2021 begin next fall. And so we have created a placement spreadsheet, which we have shared with the middle schools. And again, we began that they were involved in this whole placement process right from the beginning, so we could work with them to, again, we want to own the placement process at the high school. Our instructional directors will have the data in enough time so that we can build the schedule for students and match them with their needs, and that we are managing that and owning that process. And so we hope to improve on the freshman placement right from the get-go, which then allows them to meet their trajectory as they move through our whole program for four years. So that concludes our assessment report this evening, and Alan, Dr. Wallard and I would love to answer any questions that you have.
I have one question. When you showed the very first slide showing the ACT score improvements and you showed the impact of the students who were granted extra time, it's a hot topic, right, among parents and students about whether or not to seek that benefit and whether or not it is beneficial. I was curious whether that delta between our overall scores versus the kids who were getting extended time was broader than the national average, or if that distinction or that difference between the kids who are getting extra time, their average scores versus the kids who are not, is pretty much within the national average of what that distinction is. I guess I was curious whether there can be a negative effect of more time or whether it's just an accurate reflection that many of the kids who are seeking extra time probably are not going to perform as well on standardized tests.
First of all, I think it's a wonderful question. I did not look at the comparison of that delta, that change in delta, so that's a wonderful point for us to look into. The data does not necessarily separate who actually used the extended time. It is just a categorization of who had the opportunity to use it. And so I don't know if it would actually represent some of the points. If we found that data, I'm not sure if it would represent the wonderful question that you asked, the insightful question that you asked. But again, I just like the fact that we are really measuring all students as we look at our assessment moving forward, because I think, again, there shouldn't be a separation of kids. The kids get... Again, they're receiving the support and the accommodation that they deserve and so that they can be successful on assessments.
My question was very similar to Sally's, but I guess more directed at what is the most current thinking around that extended time? I mean, because I don't understand... I mean, nowadays, does it matter whether the test, each section was 10 or 15 minutes longer? I mean, is it really going to skew the results that much? This day and age, learning is so different, right? We've talked about whether it's a flipped classroom, whether it's, you know, we're not only understanding and internalizing, but we're creating... We're doing so many things different. The one thing that we still do the same as when I was in high school is time the test the same way, which logically doesn't seem to make sense from a progression standpoint.
I agree that there shouldn't be a discrepancy between the two populations. They should be equal, but I think that we are still... It's a process that's put upon the testing. It would be nice that all kids had the... Exactly the amount they needed, that there wasn't any time to... In some philosophy behind that, but ultimately, there shouldn't be a discrepancy about... There shouldn't be a discrepancy between these two groups, just be it based on whether a student has received that accommodation, I would agree. And hopefully, we see that gap closing up so that they're equivalent.
Could you go to the slide with the single red line, the AP? It says... Yeah. So that's a huge jump, 300...
So that's a huge jump, 300, 30% more students took AP tests or 30% more tests were taken last year compared to 2015. And what's our AP enrollment this year? Is it continued to go up? What, how many tests do you anticipate in 2017?
At this point, we're anticipating about 1,590.
Wow.
That's, no, no, that's the enrollment in actual classes?
Yeah.
And so we, we.
How many, yeah, how many will take tests?
Last year, this particular number, the 1,168 represents the number scored through or higher.
You've got 1,246 tests, yeah.
1,246 is the number that we had that actually completed the test. So now our, the enrollment compared to these numbers is about 200 higher. So we would expect another about 150. We might, you know, we could.
Up to 1,400 or so, wow.
As a, as an estimation, but I would agree with that.
Wow. How long can it keep going up like this?
Well, until 17, you know.
Yeah.
But again, I think what's important is the, the, the pass rate has been very stable.
And, and you know, I, I brought that up a while ago, too. You said, how much can it go up? And I made the argument that I still think at Lake Forest High School, there are students whose next level of challenge is even before they leave one AP course. So not to have more of the AP kids take more AP tests, but some of the kids who maybe haven't accessed it prior, so I would argue that it could still go up. You don't want it to be falsified. You don't want it to be for the sake of just taking it, right? You want it to be their true next level of challenge, but we believe that there's still kids out there that have not yet done that.
What proportion of seniors is it that's taking or any students? By the time they graduate, what proportion of students take at least one AP?
I mean, in a year, so, so this number, the 1,246 is number of enrollment. So if a student took, and I just want to use this as a clarification. So if a student completed, a single student completed three tests, that was counted as three, okay? Then that approximately, the number of students that actually take the classes is around 600. And so, so the, you know, again, and as seniors, I don't have it broken down off the top of my head to.
Because I think that's the number we would want to know is what proportion of our graduates have taken at least one AP? And I feel like we talked about those numbers in an education committee meeting at some point.
Okay.
Be nice to refresh that.
Easily. We can forward that in the next day or so. Any other questions?
Yes. Listen here, everybody's taking the.
So some different things that we'll have data points on. The, the class of 2021 will take a PSAT 8-9 test this December. And so that will, we will have that as a, your, your starting point, your, your pre-tested, so to speak. In April, we are assessing freshmen with the PSAT 8-9, the same test, PSAT 10 for sophomores and SAT for the juniors. And so those, those. Exactly. And so now that same freshman, the class of 2021, over time, you'll see that first data point, and now you have, you have that same student and how they achieve to the SAT. And so that's, again, I think that's a, that, that growth will be very exciting to see how we do.
Anything else? I got one more thing. Are there questions? Sure. Yeah, we can for this. You okay with that, Tom?
I'm fine, yeah.
I just wanted to ask you in terms of the staffing of the resource center. Because I think it's phenomenal and the teachers are definitely promoting it. But my question is, do all teachers staff the resource center? And, and the reason I have is if you have a student who isn't connecting with their particular teacher, when they go to the resource center, it's only their teacher is always there. Maybe they don't teach a lot of classes, so whenever they go, their teacher's there. Are, are all the teachers?
Sure, I can address that.
And that, to give a student a chance to connect with a different person who might be able to teach it.
Absolutely. So no, not all students have, or not all teachers have that as part of their responsibility. Some students have a, or some teachers have a special assignment that might be related to the level of the course that they're teaching. If they're newly took on a particular course, they may be given a special assignment outside of that. So not all of them, but the vast majority, majority do. The beauty of our new schedule, though, on Thursday mornings, all teachers are accessible for, for students. And so if you can't, if the student can't make that connection during a resource, there is time to meet with their classroom teachers at that Thursday morning PLT time.
One thing, I, I know you all are focused on this. I just want you to know the board, it's easy to get excited by that, you know, that hockey stick. But please don't lose sight of, the purpose is to teach resiliency, to teach these kids that they could take a chance, that it's okay to fail. It's okay to get a three. Because I could see us three or four years from now, you know, we're going to want every graduating senior to have taken, taken one AP class, where that's not really our goal. Our goal is to make sure that we're preparing kids for the next level to take on new challenges, so.
I, I would just like to make one response to it. Yes, I think in the, in the student services area, the recognition of balance also, again, for the social emotional piece. Just because a student could access five APs, that may not be the most appropriate schedule for that student. And so that's very much part of our conversation in student services.
Thank you.
Can I throw in a teachable moment here in a, in a good way? Can you scroll to the average score? I think it's one up. Okay, go down. Go down one.
I, yeah, you have, you have the long version.
I got the long version, all right.
No, do you want to?
Okay, yeah. Scroll back. Uh, to your, right there. So this is, one of the things that is, is in the long form version is that our, is easily overlooked that what average looks like around here compared to the rest of the world. And the average student in Lake Forest is 26 point, has a 26.4 composite. Everybody else, there are only six states that test all students across the country. There are 44 states that really only assess, the students that are taking the test are students that are planning to be college bound, and that's against whom this is measured. And for the, the national average to be about 20.5 and for our kids to be in the 26s and 27s is, I go to conferences and people say, you know, what's your ACT? And I, we talk about, I talk about that. They're like, oh, you, you only test a couple of kids then. I said, no, this is the whole graduating class. It's like, there is no way. That is not possible to be the case. So average around here is not average anywhere else. The encouraging thing for our kids is once you leave here, you have a leg up on the rest of the world, because if you can come through our high school, and even if you are an average kid at our high school, you are in incredibly strong position compared to the rest of the country. One of the most encouraging things from this slide is that the gap between the students that are taking, have extended time and students that are taking regular time, that that really closed a lot. I mean, in addition to those numbers being incredible numbers, that the, the gap between those really, really closed. And I'm just heartened by all kinds of things in here, that more kids are, are having access to curriculum and then their success rate, that the number of kids would go up that take tests and the success rate remains the same is, is incredible. And so that's hats off to our kids and our staff and, and everybody that works with them. Thank you.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
Next section of the agenda is committee reports. So I know we do, I think we have, we'll have two committee reports. First, finance and ops.
Finance and ops met on November 3rd. For those of you that don't remember, that was the day after game seven. And yes, it was very painful at 7:30 in the morning for one of us. I don't know about all. I can certainly speak for myself. Real quickly, I prepared a statement, which I don't normally do, but I want to make sure I get some of the elements correct. And then I'll walk through some of the other aspects of what we covered in committee. But the statement reads as follows. Thanks to the vision and hard work of prior boards of education in a very capable and knowledgeable business office, I am happy to report that the financial stability of Lake Forest High School District 115 is strong. To that point, net taxes for existing property owners will be slightly lower in 2017. This small adjustment is due in part to a 0.7% increase in CPI, a projected new property growth of an estimated $22 million, and the savings related to the July refunding of the Series 2006 referendum bonds in the amount of $27 million. It is the collective responsibility of the board, administration, and staff to be good stewards of all district resources. But it is important to note that we all understand the added responsibility of properly managing taxpayer dollars. So with that, we're going to talk about the proposed levy, which we'll get into in, in a more general discussion. But I wanted to make sure that we acknowledge a significant event. I don't know that there's too many districts, school districts, that can talk about reducing taxes this next year over the prior year. Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, doesn't mean we haven't done it before, but I think it's, it's particularly meaningful for those folks that put us on the right trajectory years ago. And Sharon Golan ran this board for many years. Todd Bergner took over, Dick Block. And, and thanks to a lot of those folks, we, we really have a methodology that's working. And it's also important to acknowledge that the CPI is relatively low, which certainly helps us as well. We've had, we've had years where it was over 4%, which would make the statement that I just made impossible. But at least for the foreseeable future, I think we're in great shape. We talked about our food service update. Superintendent Simic acknowledged and, and referenced that that was one of the big things we executed this year. The coffee bar is officially open. I know I probably owe apologies to lots of parents who are noticing that they're spending a little more money this fall than they did last fall. We think that that's a good thing. We think that the fresh food, the offering, the fact that students are staying on campus a little bit more really speaks to the environment that we are trying to create. And Shayla and her team did a fantastic job in making sure that, that that went off without a hitch, or at least without any major ones. We discussed the east campus renovation reconciliation. What I mean by that is it's important to say we, we essentially were on time and on budget. There were no mishaps associated with the project, again, very effectively managed by Carol White and the team, making sure that, that we knew the minute that school got out what we needed to accomplish. And those of you that have been in the space, hopefully, are enjoying it and can see the noticeable change that it will make for the welcome center of our school district. We're, we're beginning to embark on our five-year budget projections. That speaks to this discipline that was put in place from prior boards that we've had the benefit of inheriting to continue to make sure we're managing not only capital expenditures, but trying to anticipate things we may inherit from downstate, changes in laws, changes in reimbursement factors, and, and several of those key events. And our next meeting will be held January 25th. This is our audit review with Miller Cooper. So it's, once again, the checks and balances that we're going through a formal audit to making sure that we're doing the things that we need to. Any outliers or concerns that our private auditor would see or experience, they bring to our attention. Generally speaking, that goes very smoothly. And again, a testament to our business office and, and the folks that shepherd us through that process. Thanks.
Education. Dr. Elliott?
Uh, we met on September 20th and we're, we have two new community members. Gail Gamareth, who is actually a Lake Forest High School graduate and on the faculty at New Trier. So she offers some interesting perspective. And Judith Arnstein is the other new community member. She's the parent of three Lake Forest High School graduates. And she's an administrator at the North Shore Country Day School, which is one of our feeder schools, so it's interesting perspective. So the first thing on the agenda was to meet Dr. Waller. Dr. Holland introduced him and, and he was able to outline for us his background and some of his goals here at Lake Forest. We also heard an update on the new school day beyond the food. Heard about how the schedule is working out and students' opportunities to take additional courses because of the extra slot. And heard that enrollment in business courses, for example, has tripled over the prior year because students now have more elective time. We also heard from Assistant Principal Jim Sullivan on the, the new SAT prep course. So last year, we had an ACT prep course for the very first time on Saturdays. Because of the school switch to using the SAT as the primary assessment, the, the school's going to sponsor a Saturday class that I guess is already underway. There'll be one in the fall and one in the spring. And then we had a little bit of time left for Dr. Holland to outline the goals that she's outlined for the school and faculty this year. We, we ran out of time, so I think we'll be hearing more about that at our next meeting, which is November 22nd at 7:30.
Thank you. Uh, next, are there, I know there's a EdRed liaison report. Sally?
I wanted to briefly report on the October 7, 2016, EdRed 2016 kickoff meeting that I attended with two members of the District 67 Board as well as Mr. Simic. EdRed is our advocacy group for the collar counties. And I'm going to ask you to indulge me for 60 seconds of things I learned, because I think that these are relevant facts that we need to hold in our heads as news continues to come in regarding education funding reform and things that we're going to be hearing over the next several months. They had a terrific panel that consisted of Illinois Representative Fred Crespo, who is the Chair of the Education Policy Committee for the Illinois House. He's also the Chair of the Appropriations Committee for General Services. Representative Bob Pritchard, who is the co-chair of the Legislative Education, Legislative, Legislative Education Caucus. Senator Kimberly Lightford, who is the past Chair of the Senate Education Committee. And Beth Purvis, who was appointed the Illinois Secretary of Education by the governor. These are the facts that I learned that I want to hold in my head as, again, I hear developments in the news. There are currently four working groups in the Illinois Legislature looking at education funding reform. There's the Governor's Commission that was announced in July that we'll be reporting out in February. That consists of 25 members, 22 of whom are elected representatives. There's a stakeholder working group that Beth Purvis has put together and it operates as an adjunct to the commission. Those are the folks like EdRed and the unions who are also affected by education funding reform. There's a stakeholder working group that is chaired by Senator Lightford. And then the State Board of Education is also looking at issues relating to ESA funding, which is not a huge issue for Lake Forest, because so much of our funding, as Mr. Simic had mentioned, comes from our own property taxes. Illinois's current state funding model for education is frequently cited as one of the worst or most inequitable models in the U.S. And when that happens, you sort of have two paths, right? You either have legislation reform that is sort of constantly percolating or you have the possibility of litigation, which is very disruptive and very unknown. EdRed, which we are a member of, has developed and is continuing to advocate for an evidence-based model of funding reform. It uses data and metrics to provide appropriate foundation, levels of funding to individual districts, taking their geographic conditions and their student needs into consideration. The benefits of it are that it's not a one-size-fits-all. They also are advocating for flexibility in allocating state funds as well as other reforms. What was interesting about this very diverse panel that spoke was that all of them saw the benefits of it. And if anyone's interested in learning more about it, EdRed sponsors a website, illinoisvision2020.org, that describes it in more detail. But having said that, it's, it's a data-based model. It's a, it's a reasonable model. It's an intelligent model. There are certain immutable facts that make it difficult. One of which is that the Illinois Constitution is unclear on how to adequately fund education in the state. And it's un. Constitution is unclear on how to adequately fund education in the state, and it's unclear on how the role of the state is to be played in funding. There's a fundamental funding gap. The current estimate is that the state of Illinois needs about $5 billion to fund Illinois education. It is woefully underfunded, and we were told that for the fiscal '17 year, the state overall is going to look at a deficit of somewhere between $12 and $15 billion. So the reality is, there's just not enough money to go around. All of the representatives, I thought, despite the fact that they come from very different philosophical backgrounds, agreed on several points. There are three trending issues in education funding that I think we are going to continue to hear a lot about. One is the pressure to push the pension funding back to the local districts. We're well aware of that, and thanks to the ongoing work of our Finance Committee and our Business Affairs Office, we have that well in hand. The second is the ongoing push for a property tax freeze, and then the last is a larger question of education funding reform. And I did walk away feeling like it was not necessarily the case, that there was going to be a recommendation in February that was going to be the all and the end all. But I do think that we're going to continue to see a lot of news about education funding reform in Illinois, and I think it's important that we remain abreast of it and that we use these meetings as an opportunity to keep our constituents apprised.
Ted, is there an NSSCD?
There is. NSSCD, which is the Northern Suburban Special Education District, of which we are one of 18 members. In October, Dr. Schneider, I learned that I have to make this clarification, Dr. Schneider, NSSCD Superintendent at our own, opened our new Transitional Center in Deerfield. It's in downtown Deerfield, near the Home Depot. The center provides transitional services to over 30 young adults in the community with the ability to grow services up to 50 young adults, age 16 through age 22. What this does is it teaches them how to become members of the community, get a job, take public transportation, become self-sufficient. It's really an incredible program that teaches people that have developmental difficulties, teaches them how to integrate into the community and be self-sufficient, and become proud members of the community in their own right. Having said that, and having watched it, I'm super impressed with it, and I look forward to seeing big things come from this. The next meeting, the NSSCD Board, will be this coming Wednesday, 7:00 PM, in Highland Park at the NSSCD campus. All are invited to attend, and I say this every time, and I've never seen anybody join me, but come on out.
You've just got it under control, Ted. We know you've got it covered. So, thank you. Before we launch into our action items, I want to add on to my President's Report a little bit. Last month, we had to cancel the meeting, and I want to be sure we get a couple of things in the record. First, we would like to officially, for the record, thank someone who's supported our students, staff, and schools for almost 20 years, our Board Secretary, Linda Barrett. Linda joined the high school in 1997. Throughout the years, she has served as an Assistant to three Superintendents. In addition to her responsibilities to the board, Linda served as Dr. Holland's Assistant. As Linda moves into this next exciting chapter of her life, retirement, I think Linda will be remembered for far more than her service to our school, and she told me, off the record, that we were her favorite board. Linda's patience, wiry humor, and ability to help us not take ourselves seriously will never be forgotten. We'd officially, we officially thank you, Linda, and best wishes. Tonight, I'd also like to recognize another very special team member. Last month was National Principals Month, and I don't think we need a declaration to remind us how fortunate we are to have Dr. Holland at the helm of Lake Forest High School. Dr. Holland's vision and determination to implement what's best for each student is a mobilizing force at our school. This is most obviously and recently evidenced through our new school schedule and student supports. We've given Dr. Holland a big job. In addition to setting the academic and emotional wellness standards for our students in school, we ask her to be an educational visionary, instructional leader, assessment expert, disciplinarian, community builder, PR expert, budget analyst, facility manager, special programs administrator, and cafeteria cashier. Dr. Holland is always focused on working collaboratively with teachers, staff, and parents, but most importantly, with all of our students to ensure success. We're fortunate to have entrusted the development of our most valuable resource, our children, to you, Dr. Holland, and we thank you not only during National Principals Month, but every month of the year. So, thank you. So, next, into the action items section of the agenda, first is the approval of the tentative levy. So, I'll ask for a motion, and then Jen, are you going to, is there a presentation or a review? Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the tentative levy?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the tentative levy.
Second?
Okay.
All right, this will be brief, and I always seem to follow the most inspirational speeches with things like budget and levy, but I suppose that's just the job that I have. Before the board is the tentative tax levy, and the timeline here is important. Tentative tax levy is done in November. The board will get an opportunity to approve the final adopted tax levy in December. We also have an opportunity to make changes before tax bills go out in the spring. So realize this is one of kind of three steps. As Mr. Powers pointed out, we are capped by the property tax limitation law. By .7% of CPI will be the maximum increase allowable on existing property. Of course, what your house does individually will also be dependent upon how it does in relationship to all the other houses. So if you had a 20% increase in your value, you will get a little bit bigger chunk of the pie. If your value went down or stayed steady when others were rising, then you will pay a little less of the pie. But the total amount of the pie is capped at .7%. So in the District 115's case, that's $247,000 and change. That is the max allowed. In addition to the increase from regular existing property, we also do get new construction. And I have to admit, this was a bit of surprise to us this year. Last year, we had $8.9 million in new construction. This year, we had 21.4. So take a drive around town. Perhaps you're seeing a few more houses, you know, jump up or are tucked in where they weren't tucked in before. New property does come on as new property, as kind of new revenue to the district, so we will get additional revenue from those new properties in addition to our $247,000 and change from existing. What Mr. Powers also pointed out, which is really important to note, is with the district's refunding of our referendum debt related to our construction from 2006 and 2007, is that we are paying over half a million dollars less in debt service next year, which means we need to collect over $500,000 less in revenue from the taxpayers to pay for that debt. So the net-net from existing taxpayers is a decrease, and even with new construction, the amount to the district will be less than we collected last year. So just a little clarification, or expansion, I should say, because he did very well, and his explanation on that as well. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you will get another shot, December 5th, when we bring back the adopted final tax levy.
Any questions for Jen, or John, or, I'll get it? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane? I'm sorry, is that, Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we discussed Mr. Simic's Superintendent Goals at a earlier executive session, and we had a couple of minor comments, so I'm asking that we table the approval of Exhibit A of the Superintendent Goals. So may I have a motion to table Exhibit A of the delineating agreement, 2016-2017 Superintendent Goals?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have some policy updates. PRESS is an acronym that stands for Policy Review and Something and Something, so it's not Media Press. So approval of Press Issue 92, second reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 92?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the second reading of Press Issue 92.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of Press Five-Year Policy Updates, second reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Five-Year Policy Updates?
I move that Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the second reading of Press Five-Year Policy Updates.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I believe, is approval of our east campus construction pay application number four in the amount of $59,711.13. May I have a motion to approve pay application number four?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve pay application number four in the amount of $59,711.13.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of a Parent-Teacher Advisory and Behavioral Interventions Committee Charter. May I have a motion to approve the Parent-Teacher Advisory and Behavioral Interventions Committee Charter?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the Parent-Teacher Advisory and Behavioral Intervention Committee Charter.
May I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry. Second? Did we get a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
I have a question. I know that this is best practice. Is this simply something that is recommended that the school have? Was there some sort of a reason why it's coming up now?
It was from the compliance check that the ROE did last year. The board passed the policy in June of this year. It is part of a mandated part of the school code. So we're required to have this committee, and so the policy has passed, and now the charter is being approved.
When you say the school code, the Illinois school code?
Illinois school code, yep.
Okay. That's it? Thanks.
Any other questions? No? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Powers? Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries. I'm sorry.
I'll still vote aye.
Mr. Powers.
Actually, just vote no.
Just for fun. Next is the Human Resources Report. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second?
Second.
Questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda and our consent agenda items. I'll remind any, all of you, that any item may be removed from the consent agenda at your request. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for August and September 2016, approval of release of executive session minutes from February 2016 to July 2016, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop dated September 6, 2016, minutes of an exec session dated September 6, 2016, minutes of a budget hearing dated September 6, 2016, minutes of a board workshop from October 24, 2016, minutes of an executive session from October 24, 2016, and disposal of audio recordings dated February 10, 2015. May I have a motion, please?
I move, I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115, Board of Education, approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Discussion? None? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Lane is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. We have three FOIA requests from Mark, one from Mark Stolzenberg, a resident, one from NBC Universal, a commercial request, one from One Chance Illinois, excuse me, also a commercial request, and we have two pending FOIAs from Elizabeth Gordon, a non-resident, and the Better Government Association.
Just before we move on, I was concerned about the first one you mentioned. I'm looking at it here. You know, I do believe the goal of our board is transparency within the community, and this was kind of an unusual one, in that it involved a subcontractor using our facilities to, you know, take care of a Village of Lake Bluff business. And I'm concerned that first, we said, it's none of our business, we didn't have to worry about it, and it would be costly to deal with it. I think it's a disservice to the community. I think it's an obfuscation and somewhat of a dodge. And I think also, we were paying lawyers to write this FOIA response, and, which brings up, why are we paying lawyers to deal with subcontractors who have violated our own rules? And so I'd like to know first, how much we were charged by the lawyers who wrote this response, and, you know, and how we're going to handle it in the future.
And I could address everything except how much the lawyers cost. So first, I mean, the FOIA request had to do with one of our contractors, Kathy O'Hara, receiving and possibly sending emails related to her job at Lake Bluff. So the FOIA request, as I understand it, asks for copies of those Lake Bluff, Village of Lake Bluff emails. And our lawyer, doing his job to protect this board and this district, said that those aren't district FOIA-able requests. I can't, I'm not going to argue or overrule our attorney when he says that they should FOIA, I guess what he's saying is they should FOIA Lake Bluff, if they want to see those emails. That's the way I, that's the way I interpreted it. So, yes, but we're the owners of those emails. Lake Bluff doesn't have them. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, Ted.
No, I'm just saying.
Just tell me what the lawyer's, I think the lawyer was giving us the appropriate response. Yeah, I mean, she should not have engaged in Lake Bluff business using a Lake Forest email address. Agreed? And she was, and that was discussed with her several times.
And then, of course, my second point is, if we paid attorneys to write this FOIA request, I think the subcontractor should reimburse the district for the cost of the attorney's fees.
But how, does anyone know how much we paid, forensic?
We could certainly look it up, but if I had the question in advance, I would have it, but to pick lunch.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know who to ask. I just, when I.
I can't imagine that, it's too terribly much.
Okay. Well, then I request that we table this one until we do have that answer.
There is no table. It's actually just a reporting out of a FOIA request.
Okay, then I, okay, then.
But I will say that we have had many FOIAs on other contractors or subcontractors and employees and non-employees. We've never charged anybody for them.
Well, I think this also goes to, you know, our address of contractors and subcontractors. Anyway, look forward to hearing what the answer is.
A few announcements. Thursday, November 20. Thursday, November 10th is the Band Festival at RMA at 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, November 16th is a junior/senior college financial aid meeting, also at the RMA at 7:00 p.m. November 17th through the 19th, Lady Windermere's fan performances at the DMT at 7:00 p.m. We've already announced that the Thanksgiving break is Wednesday through Friday, November 23rd through the 25th. No school. Friday is the Tree Lighting Choral Performance, one of the best things that happens in Lake Forest, other than high school graduation, I think, in Market Square at 4:45. The Lake Forest Chorus sings. And Monday, December 5th is our next meeting, right here, on Monday, right here, same place, at 6:30 p.m.
Which is the third best thing that happens in Lake Forest?
Well, actually, there is one also great thing. I'm an election judge at Cherokee, so I'll be there at 5:00 in the morning. If you forgot to vote, come see me tomorrow morning.
Wow. Good for you. So, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.